Welcome up Reverend Matt. This church to do our invocation.
Father, I come to you and I'm humbled that you've allowed a sinner that has just been saved by grace to lead this body before your holy throne. May you give them wisdom, Father, from above, that you would grant them discernment, Father, in the decisions that they make today, that it would be for the betterment of your people here in Walton County. Father, it's simply for grace and mercy that we ask for you, that you would allow your Holy Spirit to guide the events of this meeting into your perfect will, and it's in Christ's holy and precious name that I pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pray allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just saw Rhonda Skipper, but she's disappeared on me. If you're an elected official, raise your hand, because it's hard for me to see up here. Is the mayor here or any of the city councilmen? Seeing none, then if they come in late, we'll recognize them as they come in. We officially call this meeting to order. Mr. Sunday, will you give us additions and deletions, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. We have three additions to the agenda this morning. The first is under the consent agenda, and it's a request to approve the disposition of records which have met their retention schedule with the state of Florida general record schedule, as requested by the clerk's office. Those are some payroll records under the TDC. We're requesting to approve a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a MOA with the Florida Department of Transportation for the median and right-of-way maintenance along portions of US 98. And under planning, we're requesting to purchase 20 cubicles from West Florida Regional Planning Council in the amount of 2,000, and we're also requesting 11,000 for disassembly and reassembly of those cubicles. And I believe Mr. Tusa has an addition as well.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. We do have one item that we'd like to add. It's in regards to the property located at 901 Scenic Golf Drive. I actually just got an appraisal back this morning on that property, and we got one in on Friday, so we weren't able to get an agenda item in on time when they were to be submitted. So anyway, I'd like to request direction on property located at 907 Scenic Golf Drive under the TDC section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, this is the time for public comments. If you would like to speak to something on the agenda and you know that you can't be here the whole time, now's the time to do it. When we do each item, we'll have a time for public comments. If you have a comment that's not on the agenda, something general in nature, wait till the end of the meeting, we'll have another time for public comments. Are there any public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none? Any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Mr. Sunday.
Waste management.
Commissioner Chapman.
Knowledge my conflict of interest, I have filed a proper form with a clerk, and I will abstain from that vote.
Do we have a motion to approve the waste management EALs?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, now, Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Commissioners. First item we have is a request from Dufuniac Springs Mayor Bob Campbell, and he's requesting financial support for the city of Dufuniac Springs and their main street designation. Mr. Campbell here. Chris Mitchell's here to speak to this.
Good morning. I'm Christopher Mitchell, the grant writer and administrator for the city of Dufuniac Springs. The mayor is on his way. If you wish for this conversation to be delayed till he can get here, or if you wish for me to proceed, I'll be happy to do either.
Why don't you just give us a general overview? And the first question I have is, have you already received this? Has this been awarded already?
No. The application is this thick.
Yes.
This is something that the city has been discussing for over 20 years, and we are finally within two weeks now of the application being due, and the city has voted to move forward with this program. So the part of the program, the Florida Main Street program, is to show collaboration between the different entities of your city government, your county government, your Chamber of Commerce. They want to make sure that everybody's on board with the city leading the project since we are in, you know, it's in our jurisdiction. The city has created a nonprofit organization now recognized by the state called Main Street Dufuniac Springs, Inc., that this whole project will be turned over to fully within three years, and it will be self-sustaining. The mission is to bring economic vitality to the main street. Baldwin Avenue is what we're calling the main street, since it is historic. The mission is to take these old historic downtowns and revitalize them. It's a federal program that is divided amongst the states to orchestrate. It's not a grant. However, we do receive a one-time $25,000 grant, once designated, that will take about a year or so for the state to get to us. What it does do is provides the technical support that the city would not be able to afford to revitalize the downtown area. So your state leaders in architecture, bringing economic vitality expertise, that group would come from Tallahassee and support the program for an indefinite period of time.
Madam Chairman, may I say something? When Mr. Mitchell says this has been ongoing for 20 years, I'm one of the original 20-year people that tried to get a main street program here. One of the difficulties with the main street program is that you have to have the buy-in from every business downtown, because they're going to have to have money from them to do it. And that's part of the problem, number one. A major part of the businesses downtown cannot afford to buy into this. Now, maybe the building owners can, but there are a lot of absentee building owners that are not going to buy into this. But you've got to have those small businesses downtown that, God bless them, I know because, you know, I am president of the business organization, that cannot afford $1,000. I mean, they're barely making payroll. They're barely making their rent. So for, to, because a third of it has to come from, or a portion of it has to come from the businesses downtown. I have not seen paperwork, one, of signatures of the business people down there that are willing to support this, because it's going to take at least 90% or more of the businesses down there that say they want to do it. Trust me, because I've been through it more than once. And number two, I see this as an economic development issue. If they won't support, they need to go to the Economic Development Alliance and try to get them to support this, rather than coming to us, and I hate to bring it out, but when the city's got over $200,000 missing from their budgets and all that, I think it's a little, I don't know what the word is, to come to us and want $33,000. So I just, I don't think we are the proper venue. I think they should go to the Economic Development Alliance.
Commissioner Chapman.
Chris, has the city taken any formal action in regards to this project here where they've actually committed to putting 33,000 per year?
Yes, sir.
They have?
They've done it before a vote. It's in our minutes, but this whole project was brought before city council when I was hired as the grant writer for the city. The city wanted to move forward with the Florida Main Street program. That's the main reason why they hired a grant writer slash administrator. They actually thought, and when I say "they," I don't know if the entire board knew the details, I'm saying that city staff knew, that the grant writer cannot orchestrate the program as originally thought. The grant writer can only get the designation, but a nonprofit would have to run the program. Now, the commissioner may be right about, in the past, it may have required membership from the individual businesses, but they seem to have done away with that, because there's no question within the application as to how much the memberships would be or so forth. However, there is an option for funding. They suggest for a town size of $100,000 a year budget that would cover the $40,000 to $50,000 arrangement for an executive director, a paid executive director, to work full-time to bring events to the downtown area and to be led by a board of directors. The membership concept comes out of, where are you going to get the rest of the money? If county and city, chamber, and other groups contribute, where would the rest of the money come from? A suggestion would be to see if the businesses would want to create a membership program to pay into that, to supplement it. It was an option that the newly-created board would have to run itself, but that's not a requirement in the application.
But in the meantime, the cities and the counties would be on the hook for three years at 33,000 years.
We're asking, we're asking that.
Yeah, I understand you're asking that, but you're asking us to fund 33,000, and I agree with Commissioner Commander over here. With all the bad PR that y'all have had in the last few weeks concerning the sales tax not being collected because audits weren't done and all that, I have some misgivings about trying to fund something when your financial situation is not in line.
I'd like to say, you know, I think it's a really good program. I would love to see this happen. I think it might be good to go back and get buy-in from the businesses, buy-in, come meet with the EDA. First of all, you need to go to the city and get permission to go to the EDA to approach the businesses, and then make sure, and then I'd like to see you get the designation, and then we would certainly consider, I would consider, at that point, I think it might be a little bit premature of, you know, we want to help, but we need to make sure the designation is there, the city is on board with the avenue that y'all choose. I know Mr. Reynolds Henderson, I've talked to him several times, I don't know if he's here.
He is.
Yes. Mr. Henderson, would you like to come up and speak to it just a little bit?
He's the president of the newly-formed board.
He is. He's the president, and it's a great thing, and it's, you know, it's out of the box thinking of trying to revitalize our downtown area, which would be great. We do need buy-in, but if anybody can get buy-in from someone, this gentleman can.
And if I can clarify one thing, it's a requirement of the application to have the nonprofit in place and funding sources identified. So it's not like I can go back later, after, they're looking at the application to see if all the pieces are in place to give us the designation.
Right. Well, I would really like to see a little bit more work on the front end, and then before I commit personally.
And we can't do it without you.
Chris, I'll even offer at the DBPA, we will set up a meeting with you and your newly-formed organization and invite the business people to come and listen to your pitch and speak. I'll be glad to do that.
I appreciate that. Could we get a resolution of support from you that would just support our moving forward with the program? I already have a draft, it's just two real sentences that says we understand the city's moving forward with this application, and we support their mission to become a main street designation.
Madam Chair, if I could answer Commissioner Chapman's question. I spoke with the city manager yesterday afternoon, and in review of their minutes, the city council did take up this issue on April the 24th, and the city voted at that time, at least the minutes reflect, that they voted to provide financial support, a third of the financial support for this program. And the minutes also reflect that the other two-thirds would come from the businesses and from fundraising. And so, you know, I agree that it's a good program, but I would maybe suggest that if you want to consider this, maybe have the Mr. Mitchell or Mayor Campbell to come back with a resolution from the city, pledging that one-third support and asking the county for a third or whatever they're going to ask for.
Thank you.
Mayor Campbell, would you like to say something?
I didn't, I just came in, I'm sorry I was late. I just want to say that on behalf of the business community that were present the night that we had got the vote to move forward with this application, there was a standing ovation, there was a lot of excitement amongst a lot of the business owners and the people from downtown. So this is something that's kind of been on the back burner for years. I know when I came in, over four years ago, Ms. Bowers and I visited Mariana, which has a very successful main street program, and it's something that you don't see the return on your dollar from, you know, probably three to five years. And then really see it, I saw theirs at about 18, 20 years, and it was pretty remarkable. And so it is a, it's kind of a long effort, but you got to get started. We all know that we've been around, whether in business or in politics, we know that nothing happens overnight, and it takes quite a while for things to get rolling. So we have the, we have the support of the community, and we had the vote on the city council. I believe it was explained to them quite well what it took to qualify, and they all voted in favor. I know we got at least four votes in favor, so I think it's a great thing, and if we need to work out some last-minute arrangements to make it palatable for you guys, then we'll do what we need to do, and we thank you.
Mr. Henderson, I appreciate you taking, I know this is a volunteer position, but thank you for stepping up to the plate. Would you like to add anything to what's already been said?
Just that, you know, I think that, you know, I've been coming, I'm from Alabama originally, and I moved down here, I guess, about 13 years ago with my family, my wife, and we've grown our family here in Walton County and love Walton County. And about two or three years ago, I drove through downtown Dufuniac just by happen chance. I'd never seen it my whole life, but, you know, I mean, I'm a historical buff. That downtown is super special, should be special to this whole county, and not just to people in Dufuniac and people who are investing in Dufuniac. But I bought a couple of, you know, old buildings, and, you know, I want to do some stuff down there, and I want to raise some money, because you're going to have to raise a third of this at the private sector anyway. I think it's extremely important for the whole county, and if it gets deferred, if that's the best route, great, but don't, I just ask, please don't kill it, because I think it's real important for the whole county.
And Ms. Reynolds, I don't think any of us are trying to kill it. As I say, I actually, you know, and a group of us came up with this idea 20 years ago, but you have to have the buy-in of those small business people down there. I know you own some buildings and you can afford to do this, but you've got to have the buy-in of these small people that can barely make a living down there. And the mayor says that there was a standing ovation. I haven't seen a petition, I haven't seen anything, but I have heard from the people that my organization represents, that they just can't support, that, you know, they won't government to put in the money, but they're not going to put in any. You know, and until we get the buy-in of those small business people, then it's doomed to failure. Chipley's has failed, Panama Cities has failed, you know, I mean, because it's not, as you say, Mayor, it's not a, hey, let's today throw in money. This is going to be an ongoing thing, and you have to have the people excited and willing to put some, because they're going to have to change their storefronts, they're going to have to change things in order to make this, you know, palatable. So I'm just saying, we need, I think we need some more depth into this before the county commits, because we have been bitten more than once by municipalities whenever we lend them money, and bad things happen.
I totally understand.
I just, I want, I support Dufuniac Springs, I have always done it, always will, but I think we need to do this a little slower and a little with more forethought.
Well, Commissioner, I totally understand, I totally respect that position, because I think that, you know, all municipalities, you know, have fiscal responsibilities, you know, I mean, that's, I totally understand that, and believe me, I would love to feel like, you know, 100% of this can be raised by people, you know, that own buildings. There's a lot of people with, they're wealthy people that own buildings in downtown Dufuniac, but they want to sit there and wait for somebody else to do something, and we do need their buy-in, and we need everybody's buy-in, because nothing works unless everybody in this community supports it clearly. However, it is extremely important, now however we go about it, I just, I think this cannot be left behind. I don't want to say 20 years from now, I could have done this, kids, but I didn't. That's what I would like to do, is just, let's push this thing however we can together.
That's why I suggested we have a meeting and invite all the people, not only from downtown, because it's going to take the buy-in from all businesses here in Dufuniac Springs, and let's sit at a round table and let's talk it out.
And Chris, I'd love to have you come by the EDA, and Mayor Campbell's on that with me, and present this to the EDA and see if we can get buy-in from them. And I think if we just take a step back and do a little bit more, then we would be more willing to hear about it and commit in a more formal way. Does anyone else have any comments? And then I need a motion of some sort, so we can hear public comments.
Well, I freely admit Reynolds is a good friend of mine, and quite often I hear up here, and heard through the campaign, that the people in South Walden just don't care about the north end. Well, first of all, that's not true. There's a group down there that doesn't like the north end, but most of the people like, love Walden County. Reynolds Henderson is, the first thing he told me, when the first time I met him, he said, "I love Dufuniac Springs, and I want to do something up there." So I don't think any of us are against this, I think we just want a little more information.
Yes, sir. The application's due next Friday.
Okay.
I just don't think we can move that fast.
Okay, so do we, do we have some kind of motion, so we can, I see a hand out in the audience? Well, can I do public comments without a motion?
I think so, okay.
Yeah, can you?
Can I do public comments without a motion? Okay. Okay, my thinking is if we, delay is not, you know, putting, and, you know, we, I support the program, I support, but I can't support financially until I get buy-in from maybe EDA businesses a little more, so.
Would you support a resolution just supporting the application?
I think we need to get it from the city first.
Well, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, we're, all we're saying is we support what they're doing, we're not compromising any of our funds or anything.
Okay, is that in form of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second.
Motion second.
As long as there's no finances attached to it.
Right.
It's just supporting your program.
It just says Board of County Commissioners hereby endorses submission by the city of Dufuniac Springs for an application to participate, and Section 2, the Board of County Commission recognizes the potential value of the Florida Main Street program to local and regional partners and supports the efforts of the city to submit this application.
Okay, and before we-
I've got a draft here.
May I see it?
Yes, ma'am.
And before we vote, we'll get public comments.
Yeah.
So any other comments from the commission?
Give our legal, legal time to look at it, yeah.
While she's doing that, we can hear public comments. Ms. Morris?
I'd like one more comment.
Sure.
You know, the, I've been in contact with Ronnie Woods, who's over the state main street program, and they, there are certain towns that they have been just waiting to come into this program, because it's such a fit, and they think, they're very, very excited about Dufuniac. I believe, and this is certainly not something you can count on, because it's only by my communications with her, but I believe they'll give us wiggle room if we go beyond the timeframe, if they see that there is, you know, some sign of hope. So I don't know that it would all be over with if we don't get that commitment by the time the application goes in, but anyway, we appreciate anything we can do to expedite that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, three minutes, state your first and last name and spell your last name, please.
Linda Morris, M-O-R-S-E. One of the problems that I have with this is that those buildings are privately owned. You know, a lot of people with a lot of money own those buildings, and if they want to restore their buildings, that's their prerogative to do that. But I also have a friend who owns, runs a small business right there on Baldwin Avenue. She can't afford to buy into this. She just took on two kids that weren't hers, that came from a very abusive situation, and she's doing everything she can just to keep her head above water. I don't think that we need to put taxpayer money into privately-owned property, and it is privately owned. That's not what our tax dollars are for. If you want to spend $33,000, throw it at the fire department, throw it at something that will benefit everybody, and not everybody, as Bob Campbell would have you believe, is happy about this $33,000. We're not. This is taxpayer money, and they're private business. If they want to put it into roads, that's fine. If they want to put it into curbs, that's fine. If they want to put it into sidewalks, that's fine. Those are things that the public will use. But I don't think spending taxpayer money on private property is the way to spend taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Anyone else? Seeing none? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution without any commitment to finances. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve the 16th Annual Seaside School Half Marathon and 5K Run. The request is to close both lanes of Highway 30A on March the 4th from 6:00 AM until 10:30 AM, and we have, before you, Ms. Alicia Butler.
Good morning. Alicia, before you get started, didn't we discuss this once before in the south end a couple of weeks ago?
We did, but we didn't get, she didn't have all of her paperwork with the, she just actually, it was kind of a pre-
Yeah, just ask permission to proceed forward with this process.
How long have y'all been doing this?
This is our 16th annual race.
I knew it was a long time, and this is the school's big, big fundraiser, and I went to the Taste of South Walden, or whatever y'all call it, and it was fabulous. It was a lot of people there. This is a very good project, and this basically funds the seaside school.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve and authorize the chairwoman to sign the Walton County Behavioral Health Transportation Plan. This is a transportation plan that is being updated, and it is to provide for transportation of mental health and alcohol-related patients as part of the Baker Act and Marchman Act statutes. So we're just asking for your approval of this behavioral health transportation plan.
Motion second.
Second.
Any comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is- The next item is a request to appoint a new citizen member to serve on the Value Adjustment Board due to the resignation of Ms. Shani Betts.
Do we have a name of anybody?
If no Commissioner has a, has a volunteer or someone that they suggest, we can put it out on the website, advertise it, and solicit volunteers.
I don't have anybody.
Okay.
If we could just put it out, advertise.
We will advertise that on the website.
Sid, do we need a motion for that?
No, sir.
Next item, Commissioners, is a request and direction regarding the applicants for county attorney, and some interview dates. We've provided you with a sheet, and ask you to list those that you wish to interview. And we will have the clerk to tabulate those results, and also some potential interview dates.
Well, yeah, I noticed on here it says proposed dates. I guess I'm, I would leave that up to legal to come to us and say, hey, they're available. I mean, you know, give us a choice, I guess, as far as saying, unless somebody has a better idea.
Well, my schedule's so tight, I had two days.
Oh, okay.
July the 12th or July the 18th?
I'm unclosed. 12th, 13th, 14th, 19th, and 20th.
So 12th, it sounds like a winner. Hang on, hang on.
I don't know about.
July the 12th. July the 12th is good for me.
Okay, 12th it must be. Now we got to figure out who's going to. So you want to know, Stan, if this is going to be top three, top five, what?
We will. If you'll pass those to the clerk and let her tabulate the results, and then you as a board can decide if you want to interview three, four, five, however many.
Well, let's, yeah, let's see what we got.
It'll take a few minutes. Let's see what we got. Madam Chair, do you want to just move on with this other two? I'd heard her come back.
Ah, Kim.
Thank you, Commissioners. While she's tabulating those results, we'll move on to the next item, number 23. This is a request and direction regarding off-duty deputies at Morrison Springs Park. In years past, we have paid for an off-duty deputy at Morrison Springs Park on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And that began, has typically begun on Memorial Day and on through Labor Day. We're just seeking your direction, if you want to continue that, that path or do something different.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Morrison Springs located in my district, it is a enhanced park location. We have a boat ramp there, we have picnic area, pavilions, et cetera. So there's a lot of activity there, especially during the summer. I am advocating that we continue the process of using the off-duty deputies to provide additional security there. Last year, we had some conflicts over at the boat ramp, where we had the motorized vessels trying to get in or out, and we had kayakers and canoe folks taking up the ramp. Failed to understand the etiquette at a boat ramp. But I think that'll enhance the security there. If it don't, somebody's going to get beat up down there, I can just tell you. So that is a motion that we continue that process. How, where we go through, last year?
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, through Labor Day.
Through Labor Day, that'd be my motion.
Motion second, any other comments?
I would like, Stan, you and I were discussing it, and I agree with your motion, but the Sheriff's Department is increasing the fees. Do you know how much more it's going to cost us?
The hourly rate has increased to $30 per hour.
It was 25?
It was 25, it's gone to 30, and then holiday hours are $50 an hour.
And do we just put one person there?
We can afford.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking, one person and a volunteer.
Yeah, if we, a volunteer would be good, yeah.
It has been just one deputy.
Can we have a motion second? Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is an update on upcoming projects on County Road 30A. Chance Powell, our transportation engineer, is going to give you that update. Morning, Chance.
Morning, thank you, board. I just wanted to take an opportunity just to let you guys be aware of several projects that we're going to have this fall on 30A, and just give an opportunity for you guys to ask any questions, and if you wish, adjust our schedule. But starting on the West End and moving, moving back to the East, there'll be some work on the South Side of 30A at Oyster Lake for the outfall there. Don't anticipate a lot of impact to the traveling public on 30A, but there will be some, some work taking place there. We'll be resurfacing County Road 83 to 395, 30A from Blue Mountain basically to Seagrove. The Big Redfish Lake Bridge will be constructed this fall. County Road 395 and the 30A intersection. Right now, we've broken that project down into two segments. Segment one would be the 395 improvements and a turn lane on 30A for this year. Fall of 2018 would be the improvements on 30A. There'll also be some, a resurfacing project on 30A from Prominence or the Hub, back to 98 on the East End through Alice Beach and Rosemary. And the final project for Walton County Public Works would be a regulatory sign improvement project on 30A. Where basically, we're going to be looking at taking down all the U-Channel posts on 30A and replacing those, making sure that all the signs meet MUTCD standards and proper retroreflectivity. And that'd be only the regulatory signs. Any other signs will not be, not be looked at on that, that project. Also, Walton County TDC will have the multipath complete reconstruction from Blue Mountain to Grayton Beach. And then they will also be replacing all the wooden bridges and wooden approach bridges at Draper Lake, Eastern Lake, Deer Lake, and possibly Big Redfish as well. So a lot of projects taking place on that corridor, all scheduled to be this, this fall. So if there's any, any questions you guys have.
What's your primary funding source for the majority of that?
Uh, primary funding source? I don't, I don't know that anything would specifically be from, from one place. The regulatory signage is a, was a TIF project that we had identified. The resurfacing of the two segments on 30A with the standard resurfacing funds. County Road 395 and 30A was funds that were budgeted several years ago, I believe, mostly proportionate fair share dollars. Oyster Lake Outfall was a budgeted item, I believe, from last year, and there was some additional funds put in for this year for that project. And Big Redfish Lake is a HMGP grant.
Do you have any additional projects in the works as far as where you'd be using TIF funds for those?
Uh, there, there are some other TIF projects. They, they just don't occur on 30A for this fall.
Chance, the, how about an update on the designated turn on 393 and 98? When do you expect that, the designated turn lane?
On 393, the, what we've got currently under construction there is a protected left turn signal for the north and southbound approach to that intersection. It is currently underway. The contractor's having some difficulty getting the, the control cabinet in. There's about a four to six week lead time on that cabinet. They ordered it in, in early May. I, I expect that to happen any day now. Another quick update is that, I know since you're talking about 393, was DOT told me this morning that the turn lanes at Sugar Drive would be under construction within two months.
What about 283 and 98? I think you sent me some information that stated that before they had put a protective turn at that intersection, that we would have to put a turn lane, north and south, and maybe have to put two turn lanes going south. Is that correct?
Well, it would, DOT updated their intersection study that they had done back in, I believe it was 14. They updated it here just recently. I got the results of that report last week. They recommended a southbound right turn lane on Bay Drive, 185 foot. In order for us to do protected lefts at that intersection, we'd have to have this turn lane constructed. Since that's on a county-maintained facility, it'd be the county's responsibility to build it. We're looking at some opportunities to fund that through the JPA funds that we have through FDOT. I haven't gotten the results back from, or the comments back from DOT as to what's available there, but I think that's an opportunity.
Okay, but if I understand that intersection, if we put a right-hand turn lane, and then there's only one other lane left, is that correct?
There is. What we'd most, what we'd most likely do is, is that right turn lane would be a shared right and through, and the existing lane would be a protected left lane.
Okay, thank you.
The only other comment I would make is just make sure the businesses know about the projects. Y'all do a really good job with communicating with businesses, so that they know what's ahead for them.
Yep, there'll be a lot, a lot of that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chance.
Thank you, Chance. Commissioners, if we could go back to item number 22. We have the applicants for county attorney tabulated. Going down the list from the applicants who received the most votes to the least, applicant Sidney Noyes received four votes for an interview. Ms. Renee Yule received three votes for an interview. Carly Hermanson received three votes for an interview. Robert Eschefelder, two votes. Ross Ryan, two votes. Wayne Williamson, one vote. Russell Kent, one vote, and Heather Christman, one vote. So you have five candidates there that received two or more votes.
Who was the second one to get two votes?
Robert Eschefelder and Ross Ryan each received two votes.
I make a motion, we interview the top three.
I second that motion.
The top three would be Sidney Noyes, Renee Yule, and Carly Hermanson.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, discussion. I, I really would like to interview one, two, three, four, five, because some did get two votes. Five, that's just my, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay. Top three? Okay. Do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Thank you.
It's July the 12th, we try to schedule it, we have one.
And now we, yeah, July 12th, so that's all we need to do on that.
July 12th, and we'll coordinate those times. The next item, Commissioners, is a request to approve the Rural Roads Needs List for Walden County. Public Works puts this list together each year and identifies those rural roads' needs, and we submit that to Florida Department of Transportation for their assistance in finding funding for these projects through the Small County Outreach Program, the Scrap Program, and the SIGP Program. So we would ask for your approval of that list.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to approve and authorize the Chair to sign the mitigation credit purchase agreement for Helen McCall Park, expansion amount of $51,750.
So moved.
Motion second? Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, can we go back to, I just need to make a point, in case anybody notices. One of the rural roads' needs is Shady Lane. I live on Shady Creek Lane, in case anybody's looking, it's not the same road, okay?
That's my district.
Want to clear that up?
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, no comments from the audience, so seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, I might have voted twice, but that's okay. Y'all get me sidetracked.
It's better not voting at all.
I know.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve and authorize the Chair to sign an interlocal agreement establishing the Choctawatchee Bay Estuary Coalition. Back in 2015, you took action and expressed support for the Northwest Florida Estuary Program. And then in 2016, you directed Walton County staff to work collectively with Okaloosa Homes and Washington Counties and their staff in applying for this grant. An integral part of the successful application to the grant will be the establishment of a management structure. And so this interlocal agreement just provides that, that structure. We would ask for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now that we have that management structure, we would ask for an appointment of a Commissioner, Walton County Representative, to serve on the Choctawatchee Bay Estuary.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Chapman.
Of course you would.
Yeah, and let me clarify too, it could be a staff member. You know, it could be Melinda Gates or Scott Caraway, if Commissioner Chapman would like for staff to serve.
Well, there's another committee I sit on, but Stan is my proxy on that. So I would, maybe we are, get Melinda to do it. She's the environmentalist and all that, and I don't mind serving on it, but she'd probably have more time to devote to it, because she deals with this stuff every day.
Well, I will withdraw my motion and nominate Melinda Gates.
Second.
Have a motion second? Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Melinda, are you here to say, oh, me?
Yes, she is.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for transfer of surplus salary funds arising from the departmental vacancies prior to the transfer of operations, going back to April 26th, when you took action, transferred the department, or Fire Rescue Department to the Sheriff's Office. There obviously was funding that goes along with that. The request today is for $750,000 of excess salary funds that have been identified in that line item to go to, to the Sheriff's Office as well.
Let me ask this. Of that 750, is that a buildup of rate because of positions that went unfilled and have not been filled?
Yes.
I asked Melissa Thompson to break it down for you, and it looks like the 750 is made up of 350,000 that was budgeted for five additional positions. There were several more vacancies at the beginning of the year that left new positions unfilled. There was 48,750 estimated overtime associated with the new positions. 50,000 was budgeted for lieutenant promotions, and then the remainder is due to attrition and employee absences filled by relief workers.
The thing about it is that these, the monies, in my opinion, should not be the entire amount given to him. It's whatever it would take from the time they fill those positions moving forward. It's just, that's rate money, it's just sitting there in an account, and it's not being utilized, and hasn't been utilized. Those five positions for lieutenants, actually, I think it was 10.
10.
We approved last year, and here it is, almost three quarters of the way through this fiscal year, and it still hasn't been expanded. But if they're going to promote, let's say, July the 1st, they get the funds from July 1st forward, not what had happened from October last year up to this time, because it's just laying there. I just think those funds ought to stay within the general fund.
Is that a motion?
So be it.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? Any other comments?
Well, I, I think that, I think they need any funds moving forward. I think they need the $50,000 for the, for the lieutenants. That needs to be, be done right away. And any, any overtime that's set aside, I think they need that money also. Would you like to come up, Audi?
But Commissioner, those funds, if that is for a six, eight, nine-month period, and it hasn't been utilized, and it was for, that may have happened six months ago, I don't see where that money should be given to the SO. And I'll let Audi speak here in just a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
But anyway, that's, it's from whatever point of time, in my opinion, where they hired these folks after the transfer. these folks after the transfer, then they, the funding from that day forward, not what was still in the bank from last, start of last fiscal year. October first of last year.
Thank you, commissioners. Again, we're, all we're asking for is to be, money to be transferred that's already been allocated to the fire department. We would like to use this money to help us kind of climb out of the hole a little bit with some operational needs and training needs, items that we can purchase, kind of check the box, whether it be engines, whether it be vehicles. We're looking at training aids such as comic boxes and, and modular fire towers. There's, there's money that can be spent now that can help us go ahead and dig us out of, of the hole a little bit and start checking these boxes off of items that we need for operations and training.
So you wouldn't be asking for those in the budget again? Right.
That's correct. If we can check some of these boxes off, then we don't have to ask for that money again, if we can go ahead and purchase it with the money that's already been allocated.
But the, the money was allocated for positions, not equipment, correct?
That's correct. It was.
And as I understand it, y'all are going to be making some position changes. You're going to be promoting some?
Absolutely. We've already, we've already started that process. We just hired six firefighters. We're having another process at the end of the month. We're going to start promotional processes either the end of this month, first of next month. I mean, we're less than sixty days in this, and we are making changes now. We have just hired a, a training captain. We just hired an assistant quartermaster. So we're making changes as quickly as possible as we can, but this particular money can help us operationally with items that we need now. And, and yes, we, we won't be able to use that much rate money for, for hiring people, but certainly we can use this money for equipment.
And promotions, too.
Well, yes, ma'am. That, that's, that was already allocated, but that's just a short time. We only have about ninety days left or so in the budget year.
Well, Mr. Al, could you possibly tell me, we, we will have a, what a budget hearing in two weeks. How much are y'all going to be requesting for fire or rescue additionally in this year's, this upcoming year's budget?
That, that has already been submitted. That budget.
I'm just asking you the question, yeah. I don't have.
I, I believe what was submitted, two things that were submitted by former Fire Chief Bobby Martin, was, I think it was eleven point nine million, and then an extra four point five million that they requested above the budget for items, oper- operational items, additional personnel.
What are y'all requesting?
I believe it's in the neighborhood of about fifteen points, it's eleven, nine, and four point eight.
It's, if I remember my conversation with Melissa, just on the fire rescue, it's four point five million. Now, that is everything that was on Bobby Martin's wish list.
That's correct.
At some point in time. Surely you don't expect us to be able to fund four point five million dollars.
That's just.
Better get your pencil out and start trimming it down some, because I cannot see where we can come up with an additional four, five, four point five million dollars.
Sure. We, we only submitted what was submitted by then-former Fire Chief Bobby Martin.
And he did submit it as a recommendation of equipment, not that he was going to ever get four point five out the door.
Correct.
So, just better look at it there, Major.
Again, Commissioner, we, we understand that you're the financial arm to this. This is a partnership. This is a partnership between the Sheriff's Office, the Board of County Commissioners, and the citizens of this county. We understand you're the financial arm to this. We are the workforce, so to speak, machine. We have a reputation for getting things done. We are just asking for the support from you to help us with fire, to help us get the things that we need that have been neglected over many years. This is not a last-year thing. This is many years, many, many years.
But you also, also got to understand that we here, as the financial arm for this county, have to re, to acknowledge and return, and listen to our constituents. And I told you all whenever you first had it in front of this board, that if you, probably the fund what you want is going to have to be an increase in averloren taxes, and there's going to have to be a, an increase in the fire fee. Well, I've already told you, I cannot support neither one of them. So unless you can find the money, car washes or whatever, I don't see where we're going to be able to make up that four point five plus whatever else that y'all are asking on the SO side of it, the law enforcement side. It's already fifty-four percent of the budget is by the, the Sheriff's Office. If we put all this in here, I think it runs up to seventy percent of the general fund. Now, we have other things we have to do. We've got roads, bridges, we've got equipment, and we don't have the money to do it. So unless you're going to be standing there and support a millage increase, I've got some problems with it.
I don't.
Can I have one? I, I'm sorry, I take offense when you say that y'all are the people that get things done, insinuating that we don't. Right, I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, not at all. I didn't take it that way at all. I, I didn't.
Listen, I, I think the Sheriff's Department knows this is a, an ongoing process. They know they're not going to get everything they want the first year. We're going to have to work with them and work within our budget to make this work. I, I don't, this isn't, in my opinion, it's not going to be with me, anyway, a acrimonious relationship. This, this is a service that we predict, we have for Walden County, and it was voted on by the board, three to two, that we turn it over to the Sheriff's Department. Now, our job is to work with them and figure out how we can make it work. We don't need to be sitting up, standing up here arguing who said this and who said that. We need to sit down with the Sheriff's Department. I guarantee you, they don't expect to get everything they ask for. Neither did Chief Martin when he came to my office and, and requested, showed me his budget. This is a process we're going to go through, and we have to make it work. So let's not go into this any way where we're saying, all right, we're not giving them anything, or they're going to get everything. This is going to be an ongoing negotiation to make it work the best we can.
And again, this is a partnership. We, we need your help.
Right, incrementally, too. You know, we're not going to, I mean, there's lots of things I want liked, but I only.
Absolutely.
You know, so, thank you. Any comments from the audience? Ms. Morris?
The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the only money I want to talk about. I don't care about the future budget at this point. If the money was already allocated and not spent, then the money should follow the fire department. It was allocated to them. Had it been spent where it needed to be spent, we may not be having this conversation, and the sheriff may not have Walton County Fire Rescue.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
Yes, I have one. In regards to what she said, the county has to have line item budget, and personnel, everything's broke down. We all know that once any money is given to the sheriff, he can move it anywhere he wants to and use it any way he wants to. So even if it was personnel or salary money's going over there, then he can obviously take it at, at his discretion and move it over to capital outlay or buy equipment or whatever he wants with. So that's just, if the money is going to be spent to take some of these things that was in that budget request and try to take care of it now instead of waiting for it, I could probably live with that.
Right. And, and I had a, yes, we do. We do have a motion. The motion is to not, to deny. Yes, I had a, I had a, actually, Mr. Al spoke at our meeting last night, and so I did have that discussion, is, you know, what are you going to spend the money on? We know there's needs. We know, and, and I had a commitment from him that these needs, this money would be spent on emergency services, and I think we are in a position, we need to, we need, you know, if it, if it's just a matter of time, we're, you know, they're either going to get it now or in the budget, is, in my opinion. So, but we do have a motion and a second.
What is the motion?
Motion is to deny. Motion to deny.
There was. You said, I, I made a motion, you seconded it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, nay? So.
I'm, I should have withdrew my motion and put it that if this seven fifty will be taken away from the original request in the budget to trying to take care of some stuff now, I, I can live with that.
I, I can live with that, if they will take their request and cut it by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
At least.
Let's have a re, let's have a revote. All in favor of denying the motion, say, say aye. Let's see, the motion was to deny, so all in favor, none.
Okay.
All in favor of denying, nay.
Well, he.
Nay. So forward to, to, go ahead and let him have the money. Does that make sense?
But we've got to have a motion to that.
I make a motion. We go ahead and have, turn this money over to the Sheriff's Department with the understanding that this is to be used for fire and rescue and take care of things that need to be taken care of. It's a now or never, or now or later thing. So I make a motion, we turn the money over to the Sheriff's Department.
I will second that motion, if you will add to that motion, that the seven hundred and fifty will be taken out of his budget request.
Well, I think that's going to be a negotiation we have in two weeks, so let's, 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 let's just fight one battle at a time.
I withdraw my second.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, like sign. So three to one.
Just, Mr. Audi, Major, the seven hundred and fifty thousand, I would strongly urge that you go back and talk with the sheriff and your finance people and see where you can cut that seven fifty out of that original request to us.
Yes, sir.
It would go a long way.
Correct. And obviously, this is end-of-the-year money, so we are on a time constraint to spend the money, and we realize that.
I'm sure you. Because there's got to be a woman in the office somewhere. We, she, we can show you how to spend.
Audi knows how to spend money.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
And we really know we're in good hands.
And thank you again for your support. It does mean a lot. It doesn't go unnoticed. We can't do this without y'all. Thank you.
Audi, Audi, I'm glad you got a promotion to be head of the fire department, but personally, I'm going to miss your time in South Wald, and I, I enjoyed working with you down there and meeting with you and having lunch with you and just going to miss you.
Thank you. If you mind, if I just do one other thing to thank you. If you remember, I think it was last commission meeting, Tina Barker came and spoke to you about reducing the, the adoption fee for an event called For Just One Day. I want to report that we had twenty-eight, eight adoptions that day, and again, we could not have done that without your support on that, so that was an overwhelming success for the animal shelter. So again, thank you again for your support.
I saw the signs, but I just kept going, because I knew if I went, I would adopt something, so thank you very much.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And I, can I make one more suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, something like this, it would be helpful if you came to us individually. One thing's sitting at the stable, but I haven't, I haven't had a visit from anybody in the Sheriff's Department about, you know, the budget, about this or anything else.
Yes, ma'am, and you will.
It'd really be helpful.
And I'll take, and I'll take the blame for that. I'm, I'm less.
No blame, it's just a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am, but I, I should do that, but it's, it's been sixty days. It's been less than sixty days, and I do have a plan on meeting with each of you individually to give you an update on what we're doing with fire and where we're going. We still have the strategic plan to do. We're going to be developing that here in the next thirty days or so, so we've still got a lot to do, but again, we can't do it without you, but you will hear from me personally.
And I know Captain Ral and I have already scheduled a meeting with Argyle Fire Department, because that's my district, so we'll be meeting with them and more communication.
Correct, and we just laid with liberty. So that's, that's working out well as well.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is requesting approval for the Sheriff's Office to utilize additional funding for housing inmates from other jurisdictions for operating and capital expenditures. Back in May of two thousand and fourteen, BCC approved for the sheriff to use funding received from housing inmates from other jurisdictions for jail maintenance and operations to facilitate the housing of those inmates. Sheriff's Office would like to use these, this revenue source to fund other Sheriff's Office operational and capital expenditures, and we're requesting approval to add the Sheriff's Office general operating and capital expenditures to the items approved for purchase with these excess funds.
And what, last year, what, approximately four million dollars that they got?
Would have to defer, five million?
Five million. Okay, I would like, and even if we have to defer this, I would like to know what those funds were used for. I'd like to have an idea of what that money was used for, just out of idle curiosity, you know?
Do we know, Melissa?
I think some of these funds was used to purchase that fifty-five acres adjacent to where they're at now, but that's only a drop in the bucket compared to the five million they got.
We do get a request, anytime they spend the money, they send in a monthly request for reimbursement that has all invoices on it, so we have the backup on everything the, the money has been spent for.
But I'm, I'm asking, what has it been spent for?
Most of it is operating expenses for the jail maintenance, food costs for the extra inmates, overtime for the staff that is in their, that's directly attributable, attributable to the housing of the additional inmates. What precipitated this is we saw an invoice come through that had vehicles on it that looked like they were for general use, and when the approval was originally made, it was specified it was for the additional inmates, where this would have been more of a general operating expense. But most of the expenses that come through look like they are directly related to the housing of the additional inmates.
How many vehicles were requested, again, out of curiosity?
There were twenty on the invoice that came through.
Thank you.
So they want it.
Get back up here, girl.
Ain't getting away that quick. So they, because of the funds were used outside of what they were originally approved to be used, now they want to.
We just wanted to make sure that the board knew, since the original approval specified it was for operation and maintenance for, that it was attributable to the inmates.
For the jail, not twenty-three patrol cars.
Correct. We just wanted to make sure that it, it kind of was on record.
Well, if we make this change, then in essence, any of that five million dollars he could buy in, his entire fleet.
Correct.
But if they, if they've used all their money, I mean, if they've done everything they need to do to, to the jail, then they have to spend it somewhere. I think vehicles are probably a good way to, in my opinion.
So they're asking for authorization for us to allow them to do that with those excess funds. Well, then if that is done, then I would expect to see their capital outlay budget for new equipment to be reduced at the same amount. Do you agree with that?
I, I would. I can contact them to get verification on that.
And do we need to be specific? Do we need to say, vehicles? Because do we open a door to them to, to spending anything they want? You know, on, on anything they want, I guess I'm asking.
And that would be a decision for the board. The way it was, was said before, it was just up to the sheriff's discretion. It just only limited to those inmates, so that would just be a question for the, for the board to consider.
You know, I think the purchase of the vehicles might not be a, a, a bad idea of, you know, if they can take it out of, of that funding.
Well, I, I know they've spent some of those funds to buy new jail transport vehicles, which is an appropriate expenditure.
Yeah, I agree.
My concern would be using those funds that we earmarked specifically to the jail for the purposes of buying law enforcement vehicles and, and running that part of the budget.
We get invoiced on everything, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we get copies of everything.
Just my opinion, I'm not a, I'm not an accountant, and I don't play one on TV, so we can keep track of where this money is spent, how it's spent. When it comes to budget time, we can say, look, you spent X amount of dollars here, and so we're, we're thinking you don't need that X amount of dollars on this new budget, because you're spending that from the jail money. So, I mean, it, it's, you know, it's either one hand or the other. or the other. So, I mean, I, I don't see where there's a problem, uh, saying they can spend it how they want because guess what? It's gonna come out of their budget anyway. So...
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Motion. Do we have a second to approve?
I'll second it for the session.
Motion and a second.
For the discussion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You got any discussion?
No.
Oh, I thought that's what you said.
Let's see if we have any from the audience. Any audience? Anyone from the audience who speaks to this? Are we ready for vote?
Yeah. And let me ask her one. You keep a matrix, you know, so if one day out of the blue, I said, hey, I wanna know how this money's being spent, you could just shoot it to my office, right?
I don't, but I can put one together. Because we do get those, like I said, she, Kathy Lally turns them in on a monthly basis. And so it would just be to compile those.
I'd love it to be tracked.
Okay.
Just when it comes up again, budget time, we can ask the question and have the answer.
Yes, ma'am. I'll put it together.
And I would like that too, please.
Okay.
Make it three.
Make it all of them.
And make it all of them.
Send it to all of you.
Okay.
And send it on big things where I can read it.
I'll do it on a large piece of paper.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item.
We want, uh, we need about a ten-minute break.
Yeah.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is item number thirty-one. It's request to approve an indirect administrative cost allocation policy. Uh, if you remember back to the auditor general's operational audit, the county's indirect administrative cost allocation, uh, was reviewed. The only finding related to these costs were that the BCC had not adopted written policies or procedures for calculating indirect administrative charges to the TDC. Recommendation was that the BCC should adopt an appropriate methodology. We have adopted the methodology that was used in the MAXMAS study. And this is just a, uh, policy that recommends the county obtain a full cost allocation plan no less than once every three fiscal years based on the most recent years audited actual costs.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments from the commissioners? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you, commissioners. The last item that we have is requesting direction regarding the sale of property located in Blue Mountain Beach. Um, in March, Ms. Annabelle Hubbard requested the board surplus parcel number twelve, three S, two zero, thirty-four thousand, zero zero one, zero zero six one. The board voted to surplus the property and accept bids. We've, we've received those bids and staff requesting that BCC accept the highest offer. Reject all bids or re-advertize to, um, obtain more bids. As you can see in your packet, um, the high bid was seventy thousand dollars.
And commissioners, just to be clear, it's completely within your discretion to either accept the highest bid or reject all bids. Or if you'd like to try to get more bids, we can re-advertise. It's within your discretion.
Is it that orange line?
That's it. Three foot.
Yes, ma'am. It's three feet wide.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve the highest bidder at seventy thousand.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, commissioners. That's all we have.
Mr. Tusa.
Did you bring the magnifying glasses, Mr. Tusa?
No, I forgot. I'm sorry. Uh, anyway, good morning, Madam Chair, uh, Commissioners. Kelly Carter is gonna take the first two items, uh, and then Brian's gonna handle some of the beach operations items. And then I'll be back up to wrap things up for the TDC.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, in front of you, I have the 2018 North Walton and South Walton events. There are a total of twenty-nine of those. Five are in North Walton and, um, twenty-four are in South Walton. The North Walton events of the five that are presented in front of you, um, only one of those is a new event to the program, which is the Apple Classic Run. It's new to the program, but it's not new to the area. And of the twenty-four events, five of, uh, of the twenty-four South Walton events, five of them are new as well. Um, they are, they're all mostly new to the area and new events. Do you have any questions about these events?
What is the Apple, I've never classed, I've never heard of that.
It's a run in Hammock Bay and it supports, um, the schools. So there's, um, there's several, the school district helps put it together and they've got a committee that works with the chamber and they put it together. And, um, all the proceeds go for technology in schools.
I was trying to figure out how apples mean we don't grow them down here. But schools are apples. I got it now. You got the school, you got the apple.
That's what they call it.
And this was approved by the, uh...
This was approved on June sixth. Um, recommended to move forward on June sixth by the TDC council.
I make a motion. We accept these.
Have a motion. Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item of business I have for you is the 2018 media plan. As you can see, this media plan encompasses everything that South Walton plans to do in the next year. Um, it was approved to move forward on June sixth by the TDC council. It also, it's approximately five point five, five point four million dollars. And, um, it encompasses the co-op program, which will go on sale next week, should you all approve this, and encompasses everything else that we plan to do.
So moved.
Motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I can't read it. Okay?
We gotta get you some big paper.
I'm doing this by faith.
Get you some big paper. Any questions?
Uh, so, so in the media plan, are we doing shoulder season more?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. It's, it's, um, when you look at the media plan, it starts in, if you look at the media plan, it starts in October. Most everything falls in between October and the April-ish timeframe, with the exception of just a few things that are, um, co-op opportunities that are typically done with Visit Florida. And we would not want to, um, miss those opportunities simply because, um, all the rest of Florida is represented there. And it wouldn't look, it wouldn't look good to not have South Walton represented in that portion.
All right. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you, commissioners.
Morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, Brian Kellon-Burker, Director of Beach Operations. Appreciate your time this morning. A few items of business. Item number thirty-five is, uh, request to approve the conceptual design for the new regional beach access in Dune Allen. Uh, we had a, uh, public workshop. This is for the, uh, two parcels we purchased there on the western of thirty-eight. Had a public workshop to introduce a couple of, uh, conceptual designs. Uh, conceptual design, uh, A is the one that came out on top. It offers twenty-seven parking spaces, twenty-five, uh, regular two handicap, uh, has a loading unloading zone and a nice ADA accessible boardwalk. It utilizes our, um, restroom, uh, uh, building design that we used in inlet beach. So it matches, uh, uh, all of our, uh, beach accesses. And so, um, we request that consideration and approval of this design so we can move forward on design development.
Was that meeting well attended?
Well, we, it wasn't as well attended as I'd like for it to be. We had about, I'd say half a dozen people. And then I received, uh, you know, a few comments and, uh, three emails and telephone calls. Uh, of course, social media had, uh, a lot of discussion on it as well.
And I know we need to do a land use change. Will that come after the fact?
No, ma'am. I believe, uh, uh, county attorney is working on that right now.
Yes.
Brian, um...
Yes, sir.
Concept A, I think we talked about it. On the southwest corner of that parking area.
Yes, sir.
There was gonna be a, a slight modification there for...
Yes, sir. Part of the comments in the meeting were golf cart parking. So, uh, through design development, we'll put in, uh, as many as we can down in that southwest corner.
Thank you.
Probably get half a dozen golf cart parking spaces in there.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, concept A.
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Okay. Also, as part of this project, we would like to, uh, ask y'all to, uh, start the formal naming process. Uh, right now, we're referring to it as Dune Allen Regional Beach Access. Our regional beach access just east of there, locally known as Fort Panic, is actually called Dune Allen Regional Beach Access. That's its formal name. Everybody knows it's a Fort Panic. So I'd ask the tourist development council members to start thinking about this. And I'm asking y'all to start thinking about this as well. Uh, how we would like to name this access. And that may mean a renaming of the, uh, one we call Fort Panic. But, uh, just, you know, something to be thinking about as we move forward. This will take about eight to ten months for design development, uh, permitting. Uh, so we got, we got a bit of time.
I, I'll need to see our policies. Don't we have some policies on, so somebody could get those to me?
Okay. Uh, item number thirty-six. Um, as part of this project too, I would, I request approval to engage one of our, uh, engineering firms from our continuing services pool to create a conceptual design for right-of-way parking on the south side of thirty-eight in between this new regional beach access and our existing Fort Panic Regional Beach Access. Uh, if you recall, part of our, uh, thirty-eight parking project includes improvements to the Fort Panic Regional Beach Access, as well as some right-of-way parking just to the east of this, this piece of property on the south right-of-way. So what I'd like to do is connect those two regional beach accesses completely with right-of-way parking, uh, parallel or angled in a sidewalk. Uh, that, that area of thirty-eight enjoys a nice, uh, right-of-way is a hundred feet. And for some reason, thirty-eight is offset from the center line slightly towards, towards the north. So it affords a good area on the south side of the right-of-way. So this is a request to engage engineering firm to produce a conceptual design that we could then hold a public workshop to take further input, uh, from the public and county leaders.
Is this going to be similar to what we have in Grayton?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. Uh, just so the commission knows, uh, and Brian and Jay can tell you, when they were about to start the Grayton project, there was, uh, quite a bit of people against it in the Grayton area. Uh, I met with them and Jay and Brian and Cliff Nowar, who was, who was our consulting firm. And, uh, after they saw the layout, uh, they were okay with it. And after it was completed, we got numerous phone calls from the people that had originally ejected, objected to it and talked about how beautiful it was and what a great job we did with it. So, uh, I make a motion. We approve this to move forward.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
One thing, Brian, is we talked about yesterday.
Yes, sir. Angled parking.
That diagonal parking in there, I think it might, uh, be safer to pull in than it is to stop out in the middle of the road and do your parallel parking. So ask them to look at that too.
Yes, sir.
If you make that part of your motion.
You have a motion and a second?
I will make that part of my motion.
Okay. Who, who did the second? Commissioner Commander?
I did. Oh, okay.
Your man nearest.
Yes, I did mine.
She, she didn't know. She did. I didn't know who did. So, yeah. So, okay. Any comments from the audience?
Credit card.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next item is an ad. And it is a, uh, a request for resolution for the accompanying memorandum of agreement with the FDOT. And this is for our, um, uh, Highway ninety-eight median and right-of-way, uh, grass cutting project that has been previously approved and funded. So it requires a, uh, MOA. And that MOA requires a resolution from the county.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
And then item thirty-seven is the MOA.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you. Item thirty-eight, uh, request approval to extend the multi-use path along County Road eighty-three north to the Longleaf Greenway Trail. Uh, on, this is, uh, Blue Mountain Beach Road, our multi-use path. It goes from thirty-eight approximately, uh, five hundred feet north. And it stops at the last neighborhood that was built there called Lakeside. Blue Mountain Village, which is on the west side of the road, has requested a crosswalk be built, but there's no place for the crosswalk to go to. So we were gonna extend the path up that far. After looking at it, we thought that it'd be a good idea to extend that path another approximately nine hundred feet up to what's called the Longleaf Greenway Trail. And that is the trail that runs through the state forest system. Uh, so it's for a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. We think it will be a good improvement to our multi-use path trail system.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And, uh, last item I have, number thirty-nine, is a request for approval for design fabrication installation of beach access signage not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars. And this is for a change to our kiosk signs at the top and bottom of our, uh, beach accesses, both regional and neighborhood beach accesses, to, uh, uh, inform beachgoers of our new code revisions. And, uh, that would be the revisions to chapter twenty-two, as well as chapter twenty-three customary use. And so, uh, sent you a small diagram yesterday evening that should be on the monitors now. Uh, and what we're gonna do is it's gonna be a vinyl, uh, sticker ad to our existing signage. And it will mesh in with the graphic designs there. So the small block of text that has chapter twenty-two be completely covered with new text. It will include our existing, uh, rules and regulations, as well as our new revisions. And then the, uh, other one be a sticker, uh, to place over that existing turtle sticker that would solely deal with customary use, uh, what is allowed and what is not allowed.
Right. This is kinda hard to read. Are we gonna say something about tents?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, definitely about tents. Uh, so the revisions to the chapter twenty-two will be the steel blade shovels, the access corridors, the tents, uh, on public and private property. And then the other one will be solely dealing with customary use, what's allowed under customary use, and more importantly, what is prohibited under, under customary use. And it'd be a quick, what I call a quick, uh, I won't say quick fix. It would, you know, would be, uh, the permanent fix. Uh, we had struggled with redoing signage and all that with the understanding that customary use is being challenged. But, uh, we realize now that into the season, uh, we've, uh, not done the best job we could do with informing the general public going to the beach. This will be a quick fix. We can have this done in approximately two weeks. And, uh, it'll look good.
Right. Well, where are you moving the toilets?
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at some singles, uh, message options on turtle messaging. Uh, throughout my travels around the parks, you know, while my family's enjoying the beauty of the park, I'm looking at the park, uh, signs and how they do business. And I've discovered that single messaging works very well. So we're looking at, our marketing department is looking at creating a single message sign for certain beach etiquette items. Holes, turtles, uh, as well as rules. Uh, our kiosk sign provides a lot of information. Sometimes it gets a little too busy and the people that are going to the beach, you know, they may stop and read it, but, uh...
More times, oh, no.
We'd also, we'd like to develop some what we call educational signage, uh, to cover our beach accesses. We now have some shorebird signage that is working quite well. And so turtles ought to be in that category as well.
Thank you. And we still have ambassadors out there talking about our changes and...
Yes, ma'am.
The tents have finally taken priority over the beach chairs and umbrellas. That's been the number one issue.
We have, we have. We, uh, I've changed our, our beach ambassadors are now posted up at regional beach accesses in the morning, uh, intercepting people coming out of the parking lot and off the multi-use path to, uh, you know, probably, they look for people that are carrying tents. We're trying to stop the problem before it gets on the beach. Uh, our beach code enforcement, uh, team is doing a, a wonderful job. Uh, I was down at the beach on Sunday and there's still people that are carrying tents down there. And, uh, so I, I saw our guys in action, uh, trying to mitigate the problem. We knew that it was gonna be a tough row to hoe. Uh, and we're getting there. And we should expect, you know, a little bit of pushback from, uh, people that are wanting to use tents. I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're really kinda changing a culture, not just a code. And so it'll be slightly painful, but I think we'll get there and people understand it. And, um, you know, uh, kind of a funny story. I'm sorry. But, uh, when I was down there, I saw this fella toting a tent off the beach. He was gone for ten minutes. And later he comes back carrying another tent off the beach. And so I stopped, introduced myself and said, uh, how do you feel about this new tent ordinance? And he said, man, I love it. I don't have to carry these tents down to the beach anymore.
So, his wife probably didn't, but...
I said, hey, great attitude. Appreciate it. Anyway.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Brian, uh, just real quick before Jay comes up, how are the, how's the situation with people digging holes?
Digging holes? We're still experiencing some, some holes. Uh, once again, our beach ambassador crews, you know, they got certain things that, that I have them target. And one of them is holes. Uh, and of course, our beach code enforcement officers and the Walton County Sheriff's officers do the same thing. You know, there are no hole, you know, rules against holes, digging them, leaving them. And so we're trying to get, you know, the, uh, educational message to the people that are doing them. And most people are well receptive. Also, our voluntary beach ambassador group, I say ours, it's a grassroots effort, is doing a tremendous job on educating people about, you know, not just beach rules and regulations, but beach etiquette. So, uh, you know, holes are something we're gonna have to deal with probably forever. But as people get more educated, you know, they understand.
Are they slipping the shovels down there to dig the holes now?
We're, we're encountering some shovels, uh, but, uh, not as many. You know, the word got out, you know, once again, social media can be your friend or it can be your foe. And, uh, in this case, you know, people got, got the message. So, uh, and it's an easy item to correct. Uh, whereas tents, you know, you got a family under a tent, they're not so acceptable to removing that tent. But we encounter people with the shovels. They go, yes, sir. We understand. Didn't know. And off the shovel goes. So...
All right. Thank you.
Oh, you still, I mean, children with their little buckets in their shovels.
Yes, ma'am.
Shovel, shovel.
That was the whole reason for the, uh, prohibiting the steel blade shovel is we didn't wanna prohibit holes because we know that people, little kids like to dig holes. I mean, you can't build a sandcastle without digging a hole.
That's so true.
But we felt like that by limiting the efficiency of digging a hole...
Yeah.
That we could, you know, stop some of these big holes. And we have. It's worked.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. See if we can wrap things up here. Um, so we added an agenda item for...
So we added an agenda item for direction on property located at nine oh seven Scenic Golf Drive. As I mentioned earlier, I got an appraisal back this morning, and I got one Friday. And the appraisals are coming in under the asking price. The asking price is one million six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I just wanted to get some direction from the board on what y'all would like me to do, if you'd like me to negotiate with the real estate agent, the owner, and bring that back to you. This is next to the parcel we purchased at the end of April across the Amalfi Coast, just so we're clear on that. It has a house on it right now. So the plan is if we do purchase it, that we could tear that house down and use the pilings for a bathhouse, and we could use the sewer and the electricity for a bathhouse. So we wouldn't have to incorporate that into our plans as we move forward.
All right, Jay, I'm sorry, I'm slow, so you're going to have to give me a minute. We've gotten two appraisals. Their asking price was one million six twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay, and what are our two appraisals been? This is Willy Small?
I'd rather not share those publicly, because I want to negotiate with the owner. But they.
You say they were over or?
The appraisals are below.
Okay. All right, that's all, and thank you.
I make a motion, you try to negotiate with the owner.
I'll second.
Do we want to offer like one point two one?
Let's just let, let's just give Jay the negotiation. And then he can bring it back. If we don't like it, we don't have to do it.
Great.
That's your motion, isn't it?
That's my motion.
Motion and a second?
Second.
And any other comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. And then one other quick thing while we're talking about real estate. I had a real estate agent approach me about a piece of property in Seacrest. So that was after the agenda was done, but looks pretty promising. And been talking with Chance and with Scott about usage, so I think things look good. So I'm going to bring that back officially to the board at the next meeting. It's a nice piece of property, not too far from that original piece we were looking at a couple of months ago. So anyway, I'll bring that back. And for updates.
On that property, if you'll just give me the parcel ID number, I could go ahead and order the title search as well, so we can make sure there's no issues.
Okay. Well, we'll have to do our land use report like we normally do, and I'm not prepared to ask for that today. I'll do that at the next meeting. I want to be able to have everything, you know, in order for you guys to do all the review. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, I'll bring that forward at the next meeting.
Right, if we do the Scenic Golf Drive, what would that leave us in the account?
Right now, we have six point seven million dollars. Scenic Golf Drive, I mean, the asking price is roughly one point six, so that would leave us roughly five. So if, and this piece of property over in Seacrest is about three point six, is what they're asking. So we still have a few dollars that we could do, the Seacrest property. Just wanted to give you a quick update on Visit Florida. Not sure if you heard the news, but about a week and a half ago, the legislature had a special session to address what was originally passed through the regular session. And in the special session, the funding was restored to Visit Florida. So they will be fully funded at their seventy-six million dollars. So not sure how that's going to affect our partners. We'll probably still have a little meeting with our industry partners here to see how that'll affect them. Like I said, I don't think it's going to affect them, so I think those programs will still be in place, which is great news for our industry partners here in town. Wanted also to take a moment to introduce our new marketing director. His name is Mike Kerrigan. Mike, do you want to stand up?
Welcome aboard.
Wanted to take a moment to introduce him. So we now have our whole senior staff in place, all of our directors are in place. And we made an offer yesterday to someone for our last administrative position. So in about two weeks, we'll be fully staffed up one hundred percent. So I just wanted to share that with the board as well. So any questions for me?
Any questions? I don't think so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, the first item I have is a request to either approve, reject, or approve modification an amended settlement agreement in Black Creek of Northwest Florida versus Walton County, case number three oh two C V two fifteen. As you'll remember from, I guess about a month ago, Mr. Huff and Ms. Minchew, who represents him, came before the board and asked the board to consider an amendment to the settlement agreement. They, mainly what they're asking to do is continue a sand mining and land clearing operation for now, their original request was for five years, now they're asking for three years. So this is just for your consideration. There is one additional matter, there is a land use change that was supposed to be accomplished under the terms of the original settlement agreements. Planning Department has already begun work on that. The amendment asks that we have that completed by December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen. There'll be no issue with the timeframe on that. And Ms. Minchew might have some comments for you as well?
I don't want to take up too much of your time. As you had requested, we met with Ms. Noiz and prepared the amendment, and I believe she sent it out for comment, and we didn't receive back any comments. So we're here to request approval, so Mr. Huff can move forward with the project.
And it's three years, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any other questions? Comments from the commissioners? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
The next item I have is a request to schedule an executive session in Harry A. Laird the Fourth versus Walton County, case number three fifteen C V three nine four. And that executive session would be July eleventh, two thousand seventeen, at three P M before our regularly scheduled board meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next three items are related. The first item is a request to enter into a retainer agreement with Thiriac in Spain to represent Walton County in Flock of Sea Girls LLC versus Walton County. This is a new case that we were served with. I'm sure you guys will know, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, but it's a new lawsuit challenge in the customary use ordinance. And we do have insurance coverage on this case, and the Warner's have, the Warner Law Firm has been assigned. But with all the other customary use cases, we have retained Thiriac in Spain to do the additional work just related to customary use.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, or any other comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
The next item is a request to enter into a retainer agreement with Thiriac in Spain to represent Walton County in Rosemary Beach versus Walton County. This is a circuit court case here in Walton County. This is a case that Mr. Davis had handled while he was here. All the discovery's been completed, there's a motion for summary judgment pending. All that's left is a hearing on the motion for summary judgment, so I would like to retain Mr. Thiriac so he could come in and argue that motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then the final item is a retainer agreement with Thiriac in Spain to represent Walton County in Valentine's Heights LLC versus Walton County. This case is identical to the Flock of Sea Girls case, they're neighbors, it's likely going to be consolidated into one case, so it won't be much more work.
Same attorney, isn't it?
Yes, same attorney.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Tony Anderson, do you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Sarah Commander?
I do, I actually have two items. My first item is, you know, I don't know whether any of you have passed by Shockdoll Park lately. The splash pad is now working, and kids are enjoying it. Passed by the other day, and it's a joy to see those kids out there. But we have one more thing to do, and then that's going to be an absolutely brand-new park. The boardwalk, as you can see from the little green thing, all the way is in bad shape of, in some places is rotting and doesn't, it's not going to hold up too much longer. So in an effort to, you know, look at this park and say, everything is up to snuff, I'd like to take five thousand dollars out of my recreational plat fee. I believe that'll leave me a thousand dollars left in there to put towards redoing this boardwalk. What we're going to try to do right now, if y'all approve the five thousand, is to replace the boards that are in really bad shape. And Buddy, nod your head if you agree with me. And then in the budget, I think he's going to ask enough, I think it's going to cost like nine thousand to do, to go ahead and finish it out, so that boardwalk will be complete and safe. So I would like to take five thousand out of my recreational plat fee budget and start the improvements on that boardwalk.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion, second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? My comment is, can we move that porta potty now that we have a nice bathroom facility?
I don't know why that's there. No, I was going to say, it wasn't there the other day.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it wasn't there the other day.
All right.
I didn't know somebody had moved it in for something, I didn't.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I have one more comment, as we will not be meeting again before the Fourth of July. I would like to invite you on behalf of the Dufunia Business Professional Association to join us for our twenty-sixth annual, it's hard to believe I'm that old, Fourth of July celebration here in Dufunia Springs. The parade, for those of you who'd like to be in the parade, is free, there's no charge. It goes around Lake Dufunia this year. We give prizes for the best float and all that sort of thing. If you want to be in the parade, just contact me, and I'll get you in touch with the right lady. The ceremonies again this year are moved out to We Care Park, we cannot hold them around the lake. And if you have any question as to why, I invite you to go down and look at the lake right now. The sidewalks are underwater, we have to have three hundred foot of clearance all the way around in order to safely shoot off those fireworks, and it is not there. And I got a feeling after this week, it won't be there for a while. So the ceremony starts at six o'clock out at We Care Park, as well as the fireworks. So we invite you to join us and celebrate the birth of our nation.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Chapman?
I have nothing.
I just have one announcement. Tomorrow afternoon at the TDC office, the TDC conference room at four o'clock, four to six, we'll have a roundtable of business leaders and anyone else from the community that would like to come and participate in just discussion, visioning for the future of the county as far as the restore and, the restore and, anyway, the BP money.
Triumph.
Triumph money, that's, that was it. So thank you. Anyone, you're all welcome if you can come to that. Now we have citizen request, Carolyn Zonia. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for allowing me to present to you today. I'm Dr. Carolyn Zonia, Z O N I A, and I'm an emergency room physician. Earlier this month, a ten-year-old girl, Delilah Rosa Clark, was killed while riding her bike to school. The driver who hit her stated he did not see her. And sadly, in my experience in the emergency room, I've cared for many such cases. When you have to look into the eyes of a parent and tell them that their child has died, it changes you, and it angers you, too, because many of these so-called accidents are completely predictable and preventable. In my own neighborhood, we have a chance to make a difference and to prevent a tragedy like what happened to Delilah. It would involve moving the multi-use trail from the north side to the south side of thirty-eight at the three ninety-five intersection. Until this year, I'd never done anything like this, come to a county commissioners meeting and speak to you folks. But you know, our democracy was invented to counteract the politics of obedience to authority. And so I am here today participating, and I want to speak to your conscience. I know you all have multiple interests that you must represent, many hats to wear, and many demands to balance. But I'm a constituent who uses that intersection and that trail daily. I live here year-round, and I know how hard you work. I've seen you guys toiling seven days a week. And in fact, just a couple of weeks ago, on a Sunday, I sat with you at the long-range planning meeting and listened to Representative Brad Drake speak to all of us. And I was so impressed that he started his presentation by saying he felt his number one responsibility as an elected official was to ensure safety for his constituents. Every one of your constituents and every visitor to our beautiful county wants you to do the same thing, ensure our safety and protection. The attorneys and even some of your fellow commissioners may tell you, it's time to get on with this, or nothing can be done. But that's the coward's way out. Right now, I need you to be courageous. I need you to find your heart, and I need you to activate that area of your brain that's responsible for empathy. There appears to be no less than five ways to reverse the decisions made from earlier this year, but you're going to have to be brave. This is clearly going to be a David versus Goliath fight, but I would ask you to say her name, Delilah Rosa Clark. Let's do this for her, and you'll have all of Walton County behind you. Thank you.
Sidney?
Yeah, I guess just real briefly, the commissioners may be aware, and Dr. Zonia, I guess just so you're aware, the agreement that was entered into with the landowners on the south side, it was actually two years ago now. We've had, we had several meetings before that contract was adopted, several public meetings. It ultimately was adopted by a previous board, and at this point, we have substantially completed all, almost all of the terms of that contract. So for us to back out of that now would be extremely difficult, if not impossible legally.
So I would, I would just point out to you folks, you know, I'm not an attorney, but there, the former attorney brought up the fact that the county does have police powers. So the county can impose laws and regulations related to protection or promotion of a public good, like health, safety, or welfare. And so that could be invoked at any time in matters involving public safety. And this is what I'm, this is what I'm saying, folks. I know this is going to require, I know this is going to be hard, and I know you're going to have to be brave to do this, but we elect you to be brave and to do the right thing. In your hearts, I believe you know the right thing is for that path to be on the south side. It's the safe thing. I know it's going to be hard, but this is a big job, and that's why we elect you to do it. If it's too big for you, then, I mean, you guys have to ask yourself, right? Is this, is this too much?
Commissioners, I'd be happy to look at the contract again and speak with Mr. Davis. I know you previously rendered an opinion on it.
And why don't you meet with each one of us individually?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, yeah, I would like to do that for sure. Yeah, and we, and we're tied to even doing anything really on the, on the, on the, getting it ready to, until we get a connector road, because it's going to take about nine months to even do anything in that intersection. I know this is a different issue, but we are working toward, we're thinking about, we know that intersection is dangerous, we do. It, and I remember when I voted on, I didn't, I voted to put it on the other side, but it's not, it, it's not a real easy, because you're backing out. I mean, it was a safety on both, both sides of it, so it's just, you know, it's, so, but I would like for Sidney to look and see if there's.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else to do.
And meet with each one of us, and we'll, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and taking part. Any other public, public comments today? This is on anything on the agenda or off the agenda? Any comments you would like to make, other? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to go into planning and development. Mr. Carpenter?
Good morning, Commissioners.[1716.41]
Good morning, Commissioners, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. The first item, number 48 on our agenda this morning, is a request to approve and authorize the Chair to sign a right-to-entry agreement with WSJS Florida LLC to restore mechanical clearing impacts in accordance with the restoration plan dated in January of 2017.
Motion to approve? Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is our additional item, this is a request to purchase 20 cubicle furniture items from the West Florida Regional Planning Council in the amount of $2,000, and to authorize payment of $11,000 for dismantling, transporting, and installing. These cubicles are surplus from the West Florida Regional Planning Council, and we think they would be an appropriate cost-saving measure to support our move to the Freeport Business Complex.
So moved.
Commissioners, before you vote on that, just let's amend that language, instead of saying to pay DCOP, that's one particular company, just to allocate or approve the amount of funding in $11,000, because we'll have to get a couple of additional quotes on that.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
And my second.
I just have a what? I mean, okay, so these things cost $2,000, I mean, it's going to take $11,000 to disassemble them, transfer them here, and assemble them back?
You ever took one apart?
No, sir, that's why I'm asking.
It is a task.
Yes, that's.
And if we buying 20 for $2,000, they're probably about $4,000 to $5,000 apiece, if you bought them, dude.
I mean, I, thank you for, I wanted to know.
Because we did it over the SO years.
Okay, so, so you're not volunteering to put them back together?
No.
Mr. Carpenter and I did go take a look at them, and it would be quite, quite the task.
But they are in good shape.
They're in very good shape, and as Commissioner Chapman said, I believe the number is $5,006 per unit that they cost.
20 for $2,000, that's a deal, even with the putting it together still.
And I found out, by the way, I'm looking for deals all the time. Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so?
Thank you, Commissioners. We have no legislative items on today's agenda, the remaining items are quasi-judicial. We do have three of those that I'd like to request continuances on.
Would you like to do that first, Matt?
Let's do, yeah, in case someone that wants to leave.
Okay, the first item that we'd like to request a, a change on, and actually, this is a request to table today based on new information, this is item number 51, the Cassine Station P D Amendment. We've previously requested to continue that due to the applicant's failure to send out the public notices, but the applicant has advised us that they do not wish to proceed further with this particular amendment, so they're withdrawing that, and we request that it be tabled.
Motion to approve it being tabled.
Second.
Third. Okay, motion and a second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item for a request to continue would be item number 53, this is Lot 16, South Walton Commerce Park, and this would be a request to continue to August 8th. This is one of several projects that we ran out of time to hear at the Planning Commission, so it will be going to Planning Commission in July.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item would be item number 54, the Azuro Condominium, this is a request to continue to July 25th, at 9:00 AM in this location. This is another development that will have to be heard by the Planning Commission in July also.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's the extent of our request to continue or table.
Okay, anyone who anticipates testifying before the Board, if you would stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you would provide to this Board will be the truth?
I do.
Whenever you come forward, if you'll just state your last name and spell your last name, and state that you've been sworn in. Have any of the Commissioners had any expertise communications on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to proceed.
Thank you. Our first QJ item on our agenda is item number 49, this is a request to approve by final MYLR, the pathways at Water Sound Phase 1 plat.
I was going to point out real quick while the applicant comes forward, it's a little bit different with the calculation of the recreational plat fees on this, there's a letter from me to Renee Bradley that explains the calculation. Our ordinance requires the land value to be unimproved, so whenever doing the calculation, we removed any of the assessed value on the property appraisers' tax roll for any improvements, so that's why it's a little bit different than what you normally see.
Because this particular property had been improved. Correct.
Madam Chair, if we could request that the staff report be entered into evidence?
Yes.
Hey, my name's Jeremy Knuckles, I'm here on behalf of the Water Sound Company for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jeremy? Give them just a second. Or give us just a second.
Oh, it's a planning commission's take on this?
Excuse me?
What was the planning commission, I mean, it been?
Yes, sir, it went to the planning commission in June, and they have a recommendation unanimously to recommend approval to this Board. And also, all the fees have been paid.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, this did not go to planning commission, as plats do not go to planning commission. The development order has been approved, it's Water Sound Origins Phase 2B, and was approved by this Board.
I make a motion, we approve.
Oh, wait a minute, do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, have a motion?
Motion, we approve.
Now, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item on our agenda is the St. Clair right-of-way abandonment, and we may have an alternate proposal.
Right, so Commissioners, the last BCC meeting, you continued this item today, today's meeting, so I would have time to speak with Mr. Burgess and the attorney who's handling the title work on this property, to see if a license agreement would work. I do have a draft of a license agreement, I've taken a look at it, and it looks acceptable, but if the Board's inclined to pursue a license agreement rather than a full abandonment of the property, what I suggest we do is continue this to the July 11th meeting, we can agenda the license agreement, and so the public can have a look at it and be able to comment on it, and then you could approve it at that time, if Mr. Burgess is okay with that.
Yes, together with Ms. Neuz and our attorney, Steve Hall, we have put together a draft license agreement, I don't know that the Board's had time to take a look at it and review it. We understand that asking for a right-of-way abandonment is, doesn't always go well in Walton County, and this probably is a better option while still accomplishing what the owners are seeking to accomplish, so I don't see that there's any problem or concern or issue with allowing you all the time to review the license agreement and put it on the July agenda.
Dean, do you know when this house was built?
It was built in 1994, is, is what I got off the property appraisers' records.
I don't know, I mean, somebody, somebody messed up.
Exactly.
When you build it about two and a half feet out into the county's right-of-way, you know, I don't know if they'll ever go out there and do anything as far as in that space, but then again, we may.
And Commissioner Chapman, if you guys were to consider the license agreement?
License agreement, I can go with.
Okay, so I suggest we continue this to the July 11th meeting.
Do you need a motion for that, or you just?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I make a motion, we continue this to the July 11th meeting, giving us a chance to examine the license agreement and make sure it's everything we need it to be.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any comments from the audience on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on our agenda is Myers Park, this is a request to approve by final order, major development order submitted by Jenkins Engineering, requesting approval to construct a 7,000-square-foot commercial space on approximately 9.75 acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill, it's located on the west side of County Highway 393, approximately seven-tenths of a mile north of the US 98 intersection with 393. The applicant is here to present his project.
Good morning, I'm Scott Jenkins, with Jenkins Engineering. Appreciate you letting us come before you today, I'll put this up real quickly. I think Matt did a pretty good job of explaining what we're proposing today, this is basically 7,000 square feet of office, kind of flex space here on 10 acres, that is basically directly across the street from the South Walton Mosquito Control District office over here. The building will be along the frontage here, the parking will be along the side and the rear, and then we have a fairly large wet retention pond in the back that will feed stormwater. The access is off of 393 north, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have about this.
Do we have any questions?
I don't.
I don't.
You know I'm going to ask you, the retention pond back there, what's it based upon? 50 or 100-year plan, or what?
It's actually the 100-year plan, but it's the 100-year plan because we had to provide some additional storage in there for compensatory storage, but it does hold 100 years.
And y'all did a compatibility analysis, and it shows that it is compatible with the current land use?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that area is just about all commercial back there.
It is.
Well, I make a move, we accept.
You have a motion?
Second.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to the last item on our agenda, number 55, this is the Seascape Amendment to their DRI development order. Renee Bradley reviewed this particular development, and I'll allow her to introduce the project.
Good morning. Seascape Resort Incorporated's requesting an amendment to the Seascape Resort Development of Regional Impact Ordinance 2008-34 to determine that the build-out date and the expiration dates are coterminous, with a final date for both the build-out and expiration being September 25th, 2031. The extension of these dates has been done through executive order extensions, which you'll find in your staff report, I went through each one of those to show how we got to this date. The coterminous date is coming from a legal opinion from Mark Davis, that he felt that the other ordinance was leading to the fact that these dates should have ran together instead of separate, and I'll be glad to answer any questions for the Board.
Do we have any questions? Questions, comments from the audience? Mr. Matthews, would you like to say something?
If there's nobody else here, I've learned a long time ago, keep your mouth shut. We worked on this for a year, Ms. Neuz is very much involved and understands it, and we follow the proper procedures, answer any questions you have.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
Second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second.
Oh, I like being here. Come on, let's take a walk.
Adjourn.